All right.
It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and we are in the municipal meeting room. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Marty Kane.
Zachary Shapiro.
James Flower.
Paul Green.
Paul McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Genong. I am the chair. We have before us the approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for September tenth, for August sixth and for August twentieth. And then we have public comment. We have new business or land use ordinance change request, and when we're done with that, we'll retire for the night and go home.
Well, move to approve of the agenda.
Well, Paul has to, Paul wants to add in the minutes for the twenties, for the sixth and the twentieth, so we need to make a motion to a gen, uh, to amend the agenda.
Someone moved.
Okay.
Motion as amended.
Who, who, who made the motion? Marty?
Marty.
And Paul, you seconded? Oh, Tom, Tom seconded.
Okay.
Tom did, I thought.
Motion by Marty Kane, seconded by Tom McGinn to amend the agenda to add in the meetings of April, of August twentieth and August sixth. Is there any discussion?
I don't have minutes from September ten. But.
You don't have the twenty.
No, it's September tenth.
None of us have September tenth.
Yeah.
So September tenth.
It's to add the two and then remove September.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any discussion? No, he, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? It's unanimous. So, next item is the approval of the minutes of August sixth.
So move that we approve the minutes of August sixth.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie, to approve the minutes of August sixth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, need to abstain. One abstention.
Two abstentions.
Yep.
Yep. Zachary and Tom. Okay. Five in favor, two abstentions. Onto the minutes of August twentieth.
So Paul, the major change was I was the one who nominated Zachary for a secretary. Is that correct?
That was on the sixth.
No, that was in the early one. This is the one that, uh, Zach respectfully declined. I got nominated.
Ah, okay.
I got a non, anointed or whatever you wanna call it.
That wasn't respectfully nominated?
So I did add that in there. And I did watch the video of both of these meetings and make sure the rest of it was Zach.
I have no memory. I have no memory of that.
I have a motion by Susan. Is there a second? A second? Who said it? Zach? Zach? Thank you. Motion by Susan Roth, second, seconded by Zachary uh, to accept as presented. Any debate, discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention.
To the chair.
Hang on just for a second. Six in favor, one abstention. Yes, Marty?
Uh, would it ask all outsiders to make sure they sign, sign in, please?
Yes, thank you. Yep, there's a sheet right on the table. Please sign in.
Thank you, sir.
My thanks for your patience on these minutes.
Not a problem.
Which is why I'm a little slow on the September tenth one. You'll get them at the next week.
To each time, it's fine.
And I can assume that you are here for the land use ordinance. Okay. And these are your clients?
Yes, it's, uh, it just could tell possibly how you could tell the end of the play.
Okay, then I will not ask for any public comment because there's nobody here from the public. And we will.
What meaning you want after? You probably the timeline.
Uh, no. Well, we'll, I'll invoke a timeline. Okay, new business, land use ordinance change request. Consideration of an ordinance change to section six point four point two point one in the DB one district to allow a reduced setback distance between auto service stations from a thousand feet to two hundred and fifty feet. Palak Ben Patel is the applicant. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Palak Ben Patel is the applicant and owns property at eleven forty-four Portland Road on Tax Map thirty-five Lot eleven A. He is represented by Brian Barrington of Coolidge Law Firm. Gotta make a presentation and explain to us why we should make this change? Or recommend this change because we won't, we can't make it. We can just send it up.
Sorry. Uh, my client makes some pictures with all of them. First, imagine everybody was trying to move. So for the record, my name is Brian R. Barrington. Coolidge Law Firm, and fighting since twenty years. I know. I'm a member of the Maybar three one one three. I can state, uh, based upon my personal knowledge that being the attorney that was involved in the closing that, um, the owner of the property is a mayor realty, a mere realty LLC. Um, it's a main limited liability company that I formed. Um, Palak Ben Patel, whose husband is Andy, also T just is his Hindi name, Andy, is present. Uh, Malusha Max Patel, um, is, is his assistant. And they own the property. Uh, we, we closed on the property in, in December of two thousand twenty-two. And he's been making efforts to restore a Arundel Market. And tell you that a Arundel Market, um, and this is why you wanna do this. Arundel Market, uh, was being managed by, um, people may have known him. Uh, Daniel Richard, um, he had to close the store about twenty-two or twenty-one. The, uh, contents of the store were repossessed by Gorham Savings Bank. So essentially, the Arundel Market as situated as a food market and convenience store um, was not a viable business. Could not keep going. Um, the new owners have tried to, um, get it going again, um, but they find that, um, you need gas. Gas is the draw that brings people in. Gas is almost always a very minimal profit business. Uh, my clients kind of test it out. They have like fifteen different convenience stores around New England. Um, the gas is, is the draw to make people stop and they come in and, and, and go to the market. It, I think the most peculiar thing about, and this is kind of how zoning ordinances get changed over the time is that you have the DP one district, which is if everybody's familiar, you probably know it, just it just runs a tin corridor along Route one, DP one, and then the other pink district behind you is DP two. DP two is less commercially intensive. The DP one is supposed to be more commercially intensive. But at some point, the town passed an ordinance requiring a thousand-foot separation between gas stations uh, in the DP one. But when you look at the ordinance for conditional use permitted uses, um, the, the DP two district doesn't have that, that thousand feet. You know, you have a long DP one district. Um, you know, I'm familiar with a desire of towns not to have too many gas stations, uh, in a district. But frankly, you know, you got the Sitco station and then there doesn't seem to be much else. What the Arundel Market was, it was a market in Delhi. It was trying to be a food market. That's what my client has grocery stores, small markets, independent markets. Um, and that's the focus they wanna bring in. Um, and that's the other stores that they've done. Um, they got a food market and oh, wow, in Acton, Acton Trading Post, uh, downtown Berwick, um, there's a uh, for future Nature's Market Food. They owned Mechanic Falls, uh, they had, um, Future Feud supermarket, um, and, and that's what they, they wanna do. So you're the planning board, which makes recommendation to this, to, to the town fathers and we think that it'd be appropriate, you know, to reduce the, the separation or even make I mean, you can't, as you know, you can't do spot zoning. Um, you could discuss about whether to make an exception for a, a portion of the district. But from our observations, you know, you gotta it doesn't seem to be a strong public policy purpose, you know, to have the full thousand dollars separate, thousand foot separation between the businesses. Now, as I've explained to my client, you know, there's, there's also the zoning board of adjustment and, and request to do a variance. Um, we are gonna go ahead and file for a variance. But I think it'd be very important for the zoning board to know, um, you know, what the planning board thinks about it. You know, the planning board doesn't directly advise a zoning board. It's all your fellow neighbors and community. And it'd be worthwhile to have this, um, discussion. You want to just want, you just wanna say something?
I don't know.
Check him up and just say your name and address.
I mean, so we purchased for twenty twenty-two and we were thinking to do the market, but I mean, you know, at that time, you have a lot of help and all those, a lot of the problems at that time. So now we are at the right time, but we, we feel that the, the market only, you're not gonna survive. If you get a little bit help with the gas, I think we get, you know, a lot of customers we can draw. I think we can do a lot of our business. We renovate the store inside. We put the new, new tiles. We, uh, brought some deli, like a substation, you know, sliced meat and so this is what we do pretty much. I have ten stores in Maine. And they all, all to come out. They all grocery stores. So this is what we wanna do. Small, nice stores where, you know, you don't have to go to half or, you know, like make a cheese, we can have that. So those kind of things we wanna do, we wanna do pizza. And the substation, you know, this is what we are. We wanna do that. If, if you think that if you get a gas, if you can get a easily, you know, do more business, that's gonna help me time. So this is why we are big listeners.
All right, thank you.
Jamie.
I can I ask just a, a question?
Yes, absolutely.
For these guys, just to it feeds into a, a, the bigger thing that I'm thinking about, but, but you know, the Sitco station down the road is a, is sort of a, a one bay type of gas station. You know, it's not this big, you know, it's not a big Irving or something larger. What, what do you guys have as a, as a conceptual scale for how many, how many bays or how many pumps you would have?
Oh, so we would like to go five bays. So we not have a lot of cavity, so we not have that much space. Like, you know, how I was into, I mean, uh, separate kids like one, you know?
Yep.
Or maybe you don't have that much space, we not have probably square. So we are thinking, uh, four, four or five pumps. So four to five bays.
Yep.
Probably, you know, work size. Yeah.
So a, a total of eight to ten pumps? Yep, okay, thank you.
Uh. Go ahead. Question.
Yep, go ahead, Marty.
What products are you gonna be carrying? No, fuel.
Fuel, we have regular, we have, uh, super, we drink, we have diesel. And what we are expecting is off-road, but there's a lot of plant, which not enough people care off-road diesel. So this is what for us.
Yeah, because there isn't many places besides CM Brown that has diesel or off-road in the town of Arundel. That's why, that's why I'm asking that question. I mean, you, you got a lot of contractors. And the only ones there right now, they either go to, uh, CM Brown or they have to go to the benefit to, uh, Shell.
Cancel the board kickoff when I need more, there are a few, uh,
Well, Arby homeowner with his Kubota tractor or anything else needs that too. You know, it's between the red fuel and the clear fuel. You know?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm a little confused and, and maybe I'm not looking at it right, but it seems that the proposal is to change the section one point eight point two one. Um, which
See the ordinance?
Which I, I believe was attached. Attached here, yeah, it was attached here. But that affects every business, right? It's not just this particular one. So for me to better understand what's going on, I, I understand the rationale for this specific business. But if it's changing the ordinance, that affects everything. And I am looking for the argument as to why this is a better decision or a better policy than the previous one, other than we're in this specific situation that needs this to be changed.
Well, it is, uh, it is unusual to have a thousand-foot separation. Um, anybody in economics and urban planning will tell you that businesses like to cluster. You know, that's why you have Arby dealerships all next to each other. Gas stations could be next to each other. People want this brand or the other brand. So, um, you know, it, it affects, you know, the whole district is that corridor. So it will, there's no question that it would allow throughout it. But does, if the town has a thousand feet and the other places don't really make sense, they probably wouldn't attract a gas station. Um, because gas stations like to be where the traffic slows down on its intersections. So it can't be denied that it's gonna affect the whole district as a, as an ordinance change. But you're, you're preventing intersection to be used as an intersection.
Paul?
Yeah, and this question is more, I think, for the folks on the board who've been around a while. Do we know why the thousand-foot requirement was put in? Was it a, a safety issue? Was it a? And
I think, I think
I totally get me.
Oh, you and I, yeah, I could follow the guy's answer, but, uh, I, I don't know when this ordinance was put in place, but I mean, a thousand feet, I'm wondering why is it in it? Is it a safety issue? Are we afraid of fire between the gas stations? Are we talking about traffic issues? Uh, what's, what's the genesis, I guess, of the thousand feet?
Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, because yeah, you were on the board when, when we did this. And, uh, i- if I can remember correctly, which I would knock that on, uh, it was a safety issue. There's, there was no water on Route one at the time.
Right.
And it would have been very difficult for firefighting. So we, we chose the, the thousand feet that would guarantee us enough separation from other facilities that would be like it.
And, and that, that makes logical sense. I was just wondering what the, what that was, what their genesis was.
That was gonna be my next question.
Rich, do you have a, a general idea when that, that was enacted?
We've always had water on Route one.
When did we do this?
Was it, was it, was it new when we did the DB one?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been the last
The last decade.
Because I was, I was around.
Yep.
I mean, in my thought about that would be that the DB one is, was intended as we were developing it to have more of a of a, for lack of a better word, cozy feel, street skate feel than a, than the, the larger used DB two to the rear end.
Right.
And as I'm aware, is this parcel solely in the DB one?
No.
It's split?
It says split.
Is it? I'm not sure.
You look at it, two hundred and fifty feet. Two hundred and fifty feet don't go much.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's
Only the DB one? Okay.
And
So, so that was my
That has to be in it.
Would have maybe scaled, you know, or why we would have put that in, you know, without remembering a, a distinct conversation.
I, I, if, I don't remember distinctly about gas stations, but if you remember, we put in design standards into the DB one so that we could make it look more aesthetically pleasing.
Right. Yeah, but you were trying, you, everybody was trying at that time uh, because be- beforehand we started playing with the DB one, DB two. We had the business though. And then it was through our lovely planner that pushed the DB one and DB two. And it didn't sit well with businesses per se. It was trying to get the village ass atmosphere. I mean, uh, uh, and we still can't get the business atmosphere because you don't have a sewer. I mean, uh, water, yes, and everything else, but I mean, uh, but we're never gonna come down with the, uh, crosswalks and the little sidewalk walkings and everything else that with somebody wet green.
It involves saying the Duke day, or, or the downtown skate type of thing.
Yep.
Where the, uh, we, we change the design standards to be allowed closer to the road, in fact, some requirements to, to be closer, have certain looks to the buildings. And if you plunk a gas station in the middle of that, it, it doesn't comply. So, um, and I don't know if about the water, I think that, is there water?
There is, there is now.
There is now.
There's
There's been water. There's been water along Route one for, because you got all the fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can, um, can you guys go over what your thoughts were and intent with your sketch here?
Yes, so, and, um, the elements were ready. We knocked them into the code. The workway, you know, like starting to riddle, there we landed, we're gonna tear that building and we're gonna put it back. So there we go.
Yeah.
Without looking in the middle of the
Where the, where the tarot card reader?
Yeah.
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 And then there's the place only gonna canopy anymore.
What, what about where they run the homes is?
Yes, it was taken, we, you know, the borrowing, so that we separate out. Because they have a different access. They don't, they don't, they don't, uh, sign.
Yeah.
I mean, so Phil, another question is, you never tried to reopen the Arundel Market?
We, we try to, we put, where you house, they, it is brand new, you don't like to inside, you understand, like, we need, uh, where you register, where you now, it gives you
Yeah, but you never opened the doors though. No, I mean, I go by it every day, every morning. And I see it, it's never really been reopened. One of the things that shut it down was along this way was the COVID nineteen bit. I mean, uh, where you couldn't have gatherings of, I mean, the food was always excellent there. I mean, uh, and you know, it was a quick sandwich and it was good for plowing and good for everything else. I mean, uh, but you never officially reopened it. So you never gave it a chance. You never gave it a chance to reopen the market by itself.
If I could
Well, we did have it under contract for some operators to come in and then they did their investigation and they said, no, it's just not gonna work. And, you know, the problem is he just, as he says, he has like fifteen, twenty chores and Max as well. So it takes people and other groups to operate the stores. Couldn't buy them. You know, they ran the numbers and it didn't work, so.
Help is one thing. I mean, uh, but like I said, I mean, uh, it, Arundel Market was always, always busy. I mean,
It was a thriving business up until Yeah.
When we did the call.
Last owners.
I mean, it goes all the way back to a Rooney's Market. I mean, uh, back in the forties.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise the lot is two hundred and forty feet deep, but probably is all within DP one.
Um, to the chair?
Yes.
So I have a question. When you bought the property and you did your due diligence, um, didn't, did you ever consider that you might want to do a gas station in addition to the market? And if so, um, why weren't you aware that this was a limitation, uh, for that piece of property? And that it required, after two years of ownership, for you to come before the board to try to get this ordinance changed?
Because hope springs eternal that they could keep operating it as a market. I mean, the realtors were gone home. We had the closing. He told us what a favorite meeting place it was. Everybody had breakfast there and it could business. Um, but it, it's not the, the initial, the initial intention was not to have gas.
But you never actually opened the market. So you really don't know whether or not the market is viable without the gas pumps, whether or not your initial plan is actually viable. Because you've never put it really into action. Because you never opened the doors.
Right now, like you see from inside the store, it's almost ready to go.
Oh, just say your, say your name. Say your name.
Uh, my name is Max Patel.
And how many different stores you've managed?
I own like seven to eight gas stations right now. And I assisted with him also with the grocery store and food market. So I have basic knowledge of how to business and I look at the financial literally strongly. So right now I can look at the market, the, or at the deli market, and it seems like ready to go, but it's only waiting for inventory to be left. So if you, so indeed, and we also try to change a lot of things inside it. We install a brand new store, uh, brand new clothes inside it. Almost worth it around ten thousand dollars. Try to fix all those corners inside in it. We try to clean out all the days to have really dirty deli and everything. So we try to clean that door also, clean the whole system every day. Trying to install a new pizza oven. They already have a new substation there. Uh, two more corners in there. Trying to move some of the cakes and those kind of stuff. They have installed the new checkout counter. So in spite of it though, they are only waiting to put inventory in. And then we decided it's not viable, or it's not even worth it. We give some couple of recommendations. Ask opinion about it, couple of people, and they said, it's not even worth it right now, but if you have the association, that will help you out to survive the business.
But the same principle applies because you never opened the store to see whether or not it was going to work. And now you're making a decision that the gas station, having a gas station is going to all of a sudden make the market viable, but you don't know that yet because you just haven't tested the, any of the, I, you know, you know what I'm saying? You haven't tested the idea of the market being enough of a draw with the gas station. It's just, you know.
So when we just the recommendation from So, when we just heard the recommendation from people, and they say, like, if you start the business, and the expense is gonna be there all the time, like, you cannot like hire five, six people, and then if you don't feel good, then you can stop, they should put a really bad impression about that market. So if we have the station, then we can start up fresh, and therefore, as the customers, they're gonna feel okay, there's something extra into the market or into that place to go there.
And I'm gonna have.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. So, uh, gentlemen, I have two questions for you. One is, you've deemed it non-viable, has a market study been done?
Okay, so the previous order, like, I think now that that location, just to, I mean, the basics. When I came first, like, twenty twenty-two, when I found out for sale.
Yeah.
So I came in, you know, trying to ask, you know, the questions, like, you know, why is this closing a lot of things? Then we found that person who wants to sell the property as well. So this is how we end up buying the property, because I came for something, but we bought something. So we bought the property, that, okay, you know, let's sell the property, and then we'll do, we'll do the next step. But then we asked the guy, the owner of the, the property, Rob. So he explained that, that they were being very good, you know, to use this, but the gentleman was running the store, who lived, the Rob, he says to somebody else, he couldn't survive it, so that was an argument from, from Rob, that he did not survive. This is why we were like, you know, you know, the situation that wants to be too, if we go ahead and start everything, and then what if we can, if we are to say vote, and, you know, we cannot take the money or something. This is why I came last week, not the first one, I tell you, I came last year, I was late, uh, for the meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know why, why that, but I came last year, that was the reason that I was late. This is why we came down on this show, this is why we're paying it, but we did some work inside, and we got enough time.
No, I, I, I understand why you're here, and I, I applaud the fact that you're working on it, and that's good. I'm, I'm just asking, if you keep saying it's not viable, I'm just wondering if you had a market study done, that's all.
These guys know their business, I can tell you that. They have stores all over, they have accountants in Massachusetts, we don't need outside consultants because
Okay.
they're really the experts in that field, this is all they do is buy food markets.
Okay.
But only, only.
I don't, I don't mean insult their business.
I'm, I'm just telling you from what I know from working with them.
Okay.
Um, you know, only, probably about, I don't know, thirty percent of gas, most of yours are just food.
Yeah, most of them are, are.
Yeah.
Who, but they do like, you know, the, all the businesses want to be purchased is all over.
Okay.
This is something.
So you guys are experienced businessmen, and I applaud that, okay. All right.
Good, Chair, I, sorry.
Yeah, and one other question, uh, in your letter, Mr. Barrington, you state that, uh, there's a new highway plan that the DOT just installed, and it was attached?
It's in the.
Did I miss it?
Or? I saw it somewhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was in the.
And I took away an.
Don't. I didn't have, that's why I was asking.
They do give any.
Okay, thank you, I didn't see it, I didn't have it in my pack, that's why I was asking.
Oh, it's, it's been years.
Yeah.
It's been years since they put in a turn light on, on that corner, that's what the DOT has been.
They took away one of our driveways and only.
Yeah. Because they just. They took one of the entrances there, I mean, but they also just repaved it in the last week. I mean, but the fact is, they're been changing the, the light system down there to make a, a left-hand turn onto, uh, River Road, because there were some, uh, different accidents there on the turn corner. But that's been taking, that, that was talked about DOT for the last fifteen or better years, that's how long it's taken them.
Correct.
If, if I can, um, and it's, I, I mean no offense or disregard, like, the sustainability of the business is not, it doesn't feel like that's an issue, and so like, if you wanna open it or not open it, like, but that's not, I, at, at least from my understanding, that's not what we're here to, to figure out, it feels like we're here to discuss whether or not we're changing this language to add this additional half sentence. And I don't, um, I don't know, my, my reading of the proposed language doesn't feel like it would apply to your situation anyway. Um, because it says that the setback distance would be basically a thousand feet between other existing automobile service station operations, however, a convenience or food market with no repair facilities only requires separation of two hundred and fifty feet. But if you're putting in a gas station, which I assume, or gas pumps, which I assume then qualifies under automobile, automobile service station, you're still stuck in the same situation you were before with a thousand-foot setback. Um.
A change.
As opposed to.
If you, my, my proposal, nothing wrong with my proposal, all you define is automobile service stations, and I think of automobile service stations as being full-service, old-fashioned service stations with the mechanics, gas, and whatever.
Sorry, no, the proposal's for two hundred and fifty feet, isn't it?
Yes, the proposal.
Not three hundred. That's what I have in your, in your letter. Requires a separation of two hundred and fifty feet. Either way, the, if, if your clients didn't install gas station pumps, then it wouldn't fall under the existing language anyway, right? And so, I don't know what the addition of adding the language of a convenience store food market with no repair facilities only require a separation of two hundred and fifty feet, because it seems to me, and I'm not an attorney licensed in Maine, so I, I'm not gonna make that argument, and maybe you understand better than I do, or we have to talk to our town attorney about it, but it doesn't feel like that language then includes another specific gas station with pumps, because the convenience store and food market without our repair facilities is any convenience store or food market. It's has, it doesn't provide any additional language to qualify adding the pumps to be an exception. There is, uh, I'm sorry, do you, you finished, Jack? Yeah, I mean, like, the, the argument of whether or not there should be a two hundred and fifty barrier between gas stations is, to me, it feels like a very different argument than the one that we're supposed to, argument, discussion that we're supposed to be having based on the proposed language. Maybe I'm wrong.
I, I agree with you to an extent, I believe the discussion we need to have is whether or not we are willing to change the thousand-foot spacing. That's, that's what's in front of us today.
I would agree with you, but I don't think that's what the language is doing, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
It's my understand, it's my interpretation that this language is not changing the thousand-foot distance between automobile service stations, but is just iterating the fact that there is a separation of two hundred and fifty feet between automobile service stations and convenience stores.
Convenience.
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's not, that's what I'm saying, like, it's, it's, it's very vague, and I don't know whether or not it'll fix your problem. That, I mean, that's the bottom line, right?
I agree with what you're saying, and, and, I mean, what I was trying to do was say, okay, let the town continue to have full-service service stations a thousand feet apart, but more technically defined an exception than if it's a market with just gas pumps, then it's separation is.
So, I, I, I mean, we'd have to like. Add a definition of a convenience store to include gas. There, there is a definition.
Automobile service station.
Correct.
Yeah.
Define it.
Right.
It's pretty much a convenience store with gas station that may also allow, you know, what, what the attorney would consider more of a, more of a old-fashioned service.
Right, like a oil change lift, kind of a.
We don't, yeah, I, I, just, let me read, let me read the definition for automobile service station, it does say, a business establishment with gasoline or other motor vehicle fuel, kerosene, or motor oil and lubricant or grease are retailed directly to the public on the premises, including the sale of minor vehicle maintenance products, so not necessarily, uh, maintenance or, it's, but then the rest, it says, in, includes the sales of convenience store food, beverages, and sundries, so it's that, it, um, just because it's a convenience store doesn't mean it doesn't make it a service station.
Right, and just because it's a convenience store doesn't mean that it conserves gas, but it sounds like, if it serves gas.
If it serves any gas.
Automobile service station.
Right away.
And so what I'm saying is, this proposed language doesn't feel like it includes gas stations, it doesn't fix the problem that I assume they're trying to fix. So like, even if we adopted this, even if we adopt this, it doesn't change the situation that they're in. So I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or another whether we should adopt it or not, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear that if we adopt this, it doesn't affect you in any way, it doesn't change, I mean, it might, I, I don't know how, you know, you litigate it down the road, whatever.
The rules of statutory constructions are general definitions are general definition, but if you have a specific exception within one part of the ordinance, the specific takes precedence over the general. There's, so my idea was to just specifically exclude markets that don't have repairs or just gas, have that be three hundred instead of a thousand.
Yeah, well.
Maybe.
But also, it doesn't specify gas since the.
Probably, a little more work, exactly how to say.
Right, so that's why, I mean, like, we'll, we'll vote eventually, but in my opinion, like, I don't think this does anything, and there's no reason.
You're voting on the policy.
On the proposal of that policy, and I don't think as proposed that it's.
Right.
Does anything, so what's?
Well, and, and that plays in to my thought things, in that to your point, a, a, a spot zone of this may not be, you know, a bad thing to do. However, since the DB one does extend, you know, pretty, pretty well up the length of, of Route One through town, um, I think it warrants a bigger discussion and conversation on how, how best we would want to approach your situation. Um, and to try and accommodate an intersection that intuitively I feel probably could support two gas stations, but safeguard the remainder of Route One so that we don't end up with a stretch of gas stations every other parcel. And, and I guess that's where I'm seeing things, especially, you know, with, with the scale of things, if there's, you know, if the scale of what you're talking about is going to be on the smaller side. Um, which brings me to sort of my other thought that I had with that is that, you know, I know you guys have, have a sketch that you've done, but it's not a big lot, and as you get into the more detailed site planning of the, the property, what would your reaction be if, you know, the, the eight to ten pumps all of a sudden became four to six? Just to be able to accommodate that spatially on the property? Would that, uh, still meet your, uh, your business model? Would that be enough of a, of a draw of gas to bring people in to do the convenience store purpose, or would that, us ultimately, what I don't wanna do is go through, waste a lot of power time to then have you come back and say, well, we, we did this site plan, we could only get six pumps, and we're not gonna put gas in any, so that's.
If we, we need to start, like, you know, once we get down, we're gonna do survey, and you know, then we need it, then we get out the building, then we'll see how many pumps can we, we can cook, we don't want like five pumps and then fight out the business. I wanna have the gas to bring the customer in, I don't want like just one pump, because that's not even worth it for, for us. Want to be subsized, I don't want to let the big, just to say, oh, let's say you, you don't wanna do that as well. This is why we wanna have a square canopy, so this way, you know, it doesn't look like we try to buy separate pumps. Square canopy and decent size of, of, of pumps, it's not, you're not expecting like one, ten pumps or five pumps. Whatever your fee, and if I don't need it, I don't need it, it's, if I have ten pumps, it's not gonna be like a double just this.
I.
But they don't have, it's a logo, so if there is no cash already, we just want the gas to bring the customer in.
I, I think all of this doesn't matter, like, having the discussion about what the proposal is for the business is irrelevant to what's on the agenda item. The item is, do we wanna change this ordinance, they have a specific example as to why they wanna change it.
Hmm.
I'm, I, I, I just, I mean, I, I don't think that the discussion surrounding the proposed business is relevant to whether or not we are interested in recommending the proposed language to the select board.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. To the Chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Uh, prior to their run of the market, where they did not have pumps or anything else, many times you didn't have enough parking space for all the in, uh, the amount of people were going in and out of there. I mean, one of the things they still had is the old run the market was the old meat locker. That was where they, way back when, they bring the, the side of beef in and carve every, all the meat out of it and everything else, so I mean, that was a regular stopping point for your grocery, you know, like your eggs or, uh, your fruit, uh, your meat and everything else. I mean, the run of the market was very, very.
Marty, Marty, that's irrelevant to the discussion that we're supposed to be having, which is whether or not we wanna allow.
Okay, I'm.
And recommend, no, that's okay, I just, that was Zachary's whole point, this, that's completely off track from where we should be going.
Thank you.
Well, I, I mean, I guess my point is, I'm, I'm seeing this more as a workshop session, and I think we should be having a discussion that, that melds into the gray areas and not a hard and fast black and white of whether we like the proposed change or not. If, you know, if, if everybody hundred percent doesn't like it, then we should have ended the meeting thirty minutes ago.
I just.
I think that we need, I think we need to have the discussion about whether or not we like this ordinance, because we, we either recommend this to the selectmen, or we, or we tell the, the selectmen that we don't like.
And it's, it's not.
Do that tonight.
Cause that's the proposal.
That's the proposal that we're looking.
And it's not our job to tweak the language that someone else wants to change.
I, I, I think, I mean, I think if, I mean, if, to your point, think the language that they've proposed is, could be improved upon, I think it's our responsibility to change the language.
That's why we have, I think that's why we do our policy updates.
They came before us, basically, because they need, they don't need us to make a decision. They want our blessing.
Yeah.
So that it puts a check mark in their column.
Well, no, they want.
If, if we decline, if we decline, and we decide that we don't want to change the ordinance, then that potentially has the, um, it potentially can damage their, um, ability to change the ordinance with the boards, the selectmen, or the zoning board going forward, so they need, they want our blessing to say whether or not we approve changing the ordinance. That's really what they came here for.
I agree.
Okay.
But in, in.
Yeah, but they have.
The absence of a really clear tone of the board, and that's all it is, is my perception, that we would be ready to vote seven to nothing to do that, which I'm not getting the impression we are. That I think it's part of our civic responsibility to try and work with these guys to understand what what could be proposed that would, um, benefit them in the long run and be responsible from the planning board to potentially move forward to the town as a, as a, for a town vote on this.
So I might wanna do it in the reverse and have a choice that benefits the town, that subsequently benefits them.
Okay, so, Jam, Jamel has a comment for us.
Yeah, just in terms of the process, my suggestion would be to stick to the agenda item and the language proposed tonight, and if the board is interested in having a workshop or a discussion about ordinance changes, I think that should be on an agenda so the public is aware that you are all discussing ordinance changes, other than what's here, otherwise.
Cause arguably, the public knows about this specific language.
But not about. But not about
About the changes that were made in different country.
That's just my recommendation.
Yeah.
So I would stick to like
I agree.
Those rather than trying to come up with new language.
Yeah, cause if we tweak it and then someone in the public doesn't like our tweaking, they don't have notice of that tweak in order for them to speak against.
Anything we do is gonna go to a public hearing. Any ordinance change we've ever done has gone to a public hearing before it's submitted on to the select board.
But even, even if, and, and I will admit that that is the truth, but to me, the question becomes, do we wanna change the ordinance? And it's a pretty straightforward yes or no. We can, we can change
Language or change it at all? Those are two different
Change that particular section so that the thousand feet gets changed to two hundred and fifty or it gets changed to five hundred or it gets changed to twelve hundred and fifty. The question is, do we wanna change that section? Six B, six four two B one, I think it is? Do we wanna change that particular section of the ordinance?
I think
True. Which is what we're being asked to do.
Yeah, we're asking to add that language to the end of the sentence. We're not being asked if we wanna change it or not.
Well, no
Then it's a discussion of, well, what if we wanna change it to five hundred feet instead of two hundred and fifty? And that's not what's being asked.
That's, I agree, that's not. But if you look at six B four, wherever it was. Now I can't find that section and I just have it.
But I, I'm confused because the bottom line is they don't need us to approve or disapprove this. They're coming before us because they're looking for our blessing.
That's an incorrect assumption.
He said they, they can go to the zoning.
They have other options, but right now they're asking us to make the change. So our, our option is to make the change or reschedule a workshop. Like, like Jamel had suggested, we do this and we sit down and we work it all out. And when, in, in most cases, when the public has brought an ordinance before us, that's what we've done. We've looked at what they've said and I can think, I think of Rontu's Run. We went through that three different times before, before it gets settled out to where it ought to be. You know, but that's, that's working with the client, but we have to make a decision on what we're being asked about now.
I make one suggestion.
Yes.
I think this board, look at the map, you got two major intersections. You got this intersection, then you have the other intersection just down the middle. I think the way you would craft your ordinance is you would say within a thousand feet of the intersection. And this separation will lock. And, and as a planner, you're thinking, what do you want with these intersections? Do you want more business or not? I know I didn't write it exactly that way. Cause I think it's legitimate to say, do you want a gas station every three hundred feet all the way down? You probably don't.
Okay, and ju- judge one sec. The way I'm interpreting your amended writing is exactly that way. Jamel?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would stick to the proposed language as written, not like a new proposal. We have
But this isn't a specific request. Your advisors
Can only vote on
The ordinance is only voted on by the town and the selectmen, so we're all in an advisory role.
We could, we could spend time in a workshop, but, but right now we have to deal with what we're being asked to vote on. I think we have to get through that first, then we can choose to do a workshop or not later.
But he just said he doesn't need us. It is a decision that's made by the selectmen. So I return to my earlier point. He's looking for our blessing, hopefully, to take to the selectmen and to the zoning board.
It is
So the question is, do we wanna make the, do we approve or like the idea of of reducing the amount of distance between gas stations or don't we? Period. And there are various reasons why we either might like it or not like it. But the question is, which side does the board fall on ultimately? Cause the decision right now is not ours to make. That's what he just said.
And for that, I would say he's mistaken because the changes to the zoning board, uh, to the zoning ordinances are supposed to start here with the planning board. We would then make a recommendation to the, to the selectmen. One of the ways around our addressing the issue would be for them to go directly to the selectmen, but the selectmen would send it back down to us.
He's looking for logistics. Something like that. It's not like, yeah, you're for, just like that, one, get something done. It's probably wish for two fifty, because a thousand people to be found out last year, that's what we are doing.
Well, I for one Mr. Chairman, would say that I would disapprove a change in the ordinance in this particular circumstance for multiple reasons. One is that, just so they understand my thinking. Paul, and that is, is that this is not where the Irving Station is and this is not the Bitterford Connector. It is still a corner that's quasi-residential and soft commercial. Also, there's a certain amount of redundancy between what you're proposing and the piece and the business that's three hundred feet away from you, the Citgo Station. And third, just personally, in my opinion, I would have wanted, I would have been more interested in your request if you had tried to make the market work by opening it first. To see whether or not it was viable to stand on its own. So I for one, that's my opinion about changing the
Are you gonna make a motion?
Can, yeah.
Pretty much more got bankrupt and that was the reason the market didn't work. So then, then we found out after we purchased, purchased the property.
Again, the, I don't think the viability of the business is an issue. You know, so I, I mean, like
Just said in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, but I'm saying like, whether or not they wanna open the business or not, like, I mean, no offense like that, I, yeah, yeah.
What you say about my being
Right, and, and a, a, all I'm saying is like, whether you try it or not, like, doesn't matter based on what you're asking us to do. Yeah, yeah. So, so I think, but I guess it would be a, you know, I move that um, we as a planning board reject the proposed language. Um, and are open to, um, if interested, a scheduled workshop in order to produce language that the board would then support.
I'll second that. Okay, motion has been made by Zachary, seconded by Tom McGinn to reject the proposed change. And to attempt to, to schedule a workshop, to, to go through the, the ordinance with the client.
If, if they look.
If, if they want
They wanna go around a different way is fine.
Yep, you do have, you do have other options. Is there any discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, we're not changing the ordinance, we're not changing the ordinance for the vitality of your
Right, and that's
Was that the N O D? Is that the N O D that we have to sign?
It is one of those. Anything else?
No, no.
Wait, adjourn. Jamel, before he's back to his seat.
My favorite thing to do, don't worry.
Hmm.
Uh. A few things, um, you have some documents for you all to sign, um, from last week's meeting, the Lufthansa athletics, the notice of decision and the plan, so please sign that before you all leave. And it brought to my attention that the November fifth meeting will have to be either postponed or canceled due to voting.
Yeah. Uh, yes, those elections.
Building in or room, um, so if one wants to cancel the meeting altogether, um, and just have one in November or postpone it, um, that's up to you all. I just wanted to mention that.
What was the other scheduled date, the nineteen?
Yes.
Kind of depends on what we got on the agenda.
Yeah. We, we won't know until the meeting in, in October.
And I think that we discussed and, and included
Yep.
To, to take a little bit of a wait and see approach.
Yep.
Acknowledging that the fifth is a definite.
All right, it, it will, it will have to be the twelfth and the nineteenth in November, because we just don't know at this point.
You can, you can decide and we have two months, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to prepare the
And then we should, and I believe we had looked at December and said we had, we can get both meetings in in December. Cause I think we were looking at the same thing, the fifth and the nineteenth.
Yeah.
I've always signed some of this last time.
I think it's different
Okay, before
Yeah.
Be- before we ended up discussing this, there was a motion to adjourn. Did anybody second that?
Second that.
Okay, then we're adjourned.